Steph, when you're ready, you can start presenting.
Okay, for the record, Rocky Houston, Parks and Lands Division Manager. With me today is also Kevin Tyler, who is our Lands Section Manager and Railroad Program Manager. So in front of you today is our 2022-2027 Natural Areas Acquisition Plan. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, who will do the heavy lift and provide a lot of the information today. But in general, we're trying to increase this review into a more frequent opportunity, more in compliance and alignment with our Parks and Recreation Outdoor Plan or PROS Plan. So with that, Kevin, take it away.
Good morning, Council. Kevin Tyler with Clark County Public Works Parks and Lands Division. Today, we will give you an overview of the Conservation Futures Program, including history and funding. We'll provide you a summary, as Rocky said, of the Natural Areas Acquisition Plan update. This plan will help guide acquisitions over the coming years. Included in this presentation is an update on the status of Conservation Futures Bond projects and recommended projects from the Park Advisory Parks Advisory Board for new projects. And lastly, we'll provide a six-year forecast for Conservation Futures funding and discuss next steps. Next slide, please. The Conservation Futures Program was adopted by the county in 1985 and later renamed to Legacy Lands Program in 2006. The program is funded through a property tax levy of up to six and a quarter cents per thousand dollars of assessed value that is applied to property county-wide. To date, the program has acquired more than 5,000 acres. Acquisitions have been made inside most cities in the county and throughout the unincorporated area, including many well-known parks and natural areas. Next slide, please. Here is a list of some of the more significant acquisitions using Conservation Futures funding. Next slide, please. Over the past six years, the average annual collection of the Conservation Futures levy has been approximately 2.45 million. Of that amount, 25% can be used for operations and maintenance annually, while the 75%, the remaining 75% must be used for land acquisitions. 2017 council approved a bond in the amount of 7 million to pursue 10 projects. The 2021 fund balance was 10.68 million, including bond revenue. And the approximate 2021 levy collection was 2.67 million. Next slide, please. This graphic shows the approximate split of Conservation Futures funding allocation annually based on approved baseline budget. This does not include capital acquisition projects. Historically, the county has bonded for project acquisition. Current debt service includes the recent bond from 2017 and one previous bond. Debt service for the previous bond will be completed in the next few years. Next slide, please. In the late 1980s, the county established an Open Space Commission. This commission authored the 1992 Clark County Open Space Commission Report, which has served as a guiding document for conservation of open space in Clark County. Since that time, the county adopted the 2004 Conservation Areas Acquisition Plan and performed an update to that plan in 2014. And we have been working more recently on another update. We have modified the name to Natural Areas Acquisition Plan to be more consistent with the framework of the county's comprehensive plan and the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, where we have standards for urban and rural natural areas. The 2014 update and the current effort focus more on updating mapping of new proposed and recently acquired projects as the methodology for prioritizing the acquisition of natural areas has not really changed over time. You will notice the timing between updates gradually gets closer together. As Rocky mentioned, we're trying to trying to bring together a more just a more regulated, I think, just more comprehensive view of these of this planning effort over time. Our intent is to manage this program like the Transportation Improvement Program and the Stormwater Capital Improvement Program and update our six-year list of projects on an annual basis and bring that to council along with our Parks Capital Improvement Plan. Next slide, please. The county needs to update the Natural Areas Acquisition Plan to maintain eligibility for state and federal grants administered through the Recreation and Conservation Office. The plan helps to engage partners, including cities and local nonprofit organizations that are eligible for Conservation Futures funding under state law. Plan helps us prioritize our use of the fund. And lastly, the Natural Areas Acquisition Plan is a component of the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. Helps the county to comply with the Parks Element of the Growth Management Act. Next slide, please. The plan is structured to maintain compliance with the Recreation and Conservation Office required plan elements, including conservation goals and objectives and inventory of our resources, the public involvement process, demand analysis, a six-year capital plan, and certification of plan adoption. Next slide, please. The process for updating the plan started in 2019 with efforts to engage regional conservation partners and cities to identify priority projects. Parks and Lands then met with council in a work session on September 30th, 2020, and council referred those priority projects to the Parks Advisory Board for review and prioritization. Parks Advisory Board met several times between November 2020 and March 2021 to review and rank projects for recommendation to council. As part of recent efforts to update the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, the community was engaged through surveys and other methods to solicit input on natural areas and open space. Parks and Lands is now returning to council with a draft Natural Areas Acquisition Plan and priority project list for consideration with the hope of moving forward to a hearing for formal adoption. The Parks Advisory Board also recommended approval of the draft plan at their December 14th, 2020, 2021 meeting. The draft plan was posted to the Parks website and to the council agenda for this work session. We are also seeking feedback on the plan from the community through social media. Next slide, please. Now I will switch gears a little bit and provide an update on the projects approved with the 2017-2018 Conservation Futures Bond. Please go to the next slide. Since the, since bonds were sold in 2018, several projects have been acquired, including the Lackamas Lake Project, Fenton Park, and Mason Creek totaling almost 230 acres. The East Fork Optimist Project is also nearing completion. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, several projects have also been withdrawn from consideration, including the Washougal River Project sponsored by the city Washougal, the Rock Creek Forest and Yakult Burn Forest Forest Projects sponsored by the Columbia Land Trust and the Bowling Creek Trail Corridor sponsored by the City of La Center. Next slide, please. All remaining active projects will be carried forward in the Natural Areas Acquisition Plan and negotiations are ongoing. All, the Conservation Futures Program is a willing seller, willing buyer program, meaning that sellers can walk away at any time during our negotiations. Next slide, please. As part of the update of the Natural Areas Acquisition Plan, several new priority projects were identified. These projects will replace those withdrawn from the 2017-2018 bond list. Based on current estimates, all of these projects can be funded over the six-year horizon of this plan using available fund revenue, assuming that agreements can be reached with landowners. These 15 projects were ranked by the Parks Advisory Board for recommendation to council. We have detailed information for each project in the coming slides. Please note that the Yakult Burn State Forest Project will not be moving forward and the Fenton Park and Yakult Community Park projects were not recommended for funding by the Parks Advisory Board. Conservation Futures is also an opportunity program, so new projects may come up as we progress through the planning cycle. Our intent will be to bring forward new projects as part of the annual update and approval process for the six-year Parks Capital Plan like the Transportation Improvement Program. Next slide, please. This map shows the geographic distribution of the 2017 and 2021 projects. Green dots are the 2017 projects, those 10 projects I mentioned previously, and the yellow dots are the newer 2021 projects. Only the 2021 projects are listed by name here. Next slide, please. This six-year forecast shows estimated project delivery for remaining Conservation Futures Bond projects over the course of this year or next year. Funding of the Parks Advisory Board recommended projects over the next four years and some remaining balance for new projects in 2026 and 2027. Fund balance can also be maintained at 3 to 4 million annually across the six-year forecast. Our intent is to update this forecast and the six-year project list on an annual basis and return to council for adoption as part of the Parks Capital Improvement Plan. Expenditures shown in the forecast also include operations and maintenance costs and debt service. Next slide, please. The next 14 slides provide details for each of the projects reviewed by the Parks Advisory Board, presented in order of their recommendations. Columbia Land Trust proposes to purchase three parcels totaling 21.3 acres that straddle Horseshoe Falls, located on the East Fork Lewis River between Molton Falls and Sunset Falls. Horseshoe Falls is the last unprotected falls along the East Fork Lewis River. The Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board also rated this as a top project and has awarded a grant to Columbia Land Trust to assist in the purchase of the property. Next slide, please. Cedar's Golf Course is approximately 133 acres in size with two miles of frontage along Salmon Creek adjacent to the county Salmon Morgan Creek's natural area and the Chilachi Prairie Railroad. The property falls within the City of Battleground and the city council expressed support for the project. In a work session on July 7th, 2021, council asked staff to engage the community focusing on a potential purchase of 118 acres of the property. Public Works received approximately 120 responses by email, mail, or phone and has been working to summarize this information. Public Works also, has also started an appraisal process looking at two options, the entire property and the 118 acres discussed with council on July 7th. Next slide, please. Columbia River Shoreline is a 16-acre parcel with nearly half mile of river frontage. The parcel is divided by the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway. The residence and outbuildings are located on the upper portion. The lower portion is undeveloped. Efforts to acquire this parcel began in 2011 by the city of Vancouver, who remains an active partner in the purchase and continues dialogue with the landowners. This project would protect one of the last large undeveloped parcels on the Columbia River and adjoins two properties owned by the Department of Transportation immediately downstream that include an additional quarter mile of river frontage. The property would provide opportunities for increased Columbia River recreation access and has been identified as a potential trailhead for the Lewis and Clark Trail Plan. Next slide, please. The Ridgefield Pits are an abandoned sand and gravel mine through which the East Fork Lewis River flooded and changed course in 1996. The project site is 125 acres and connects several county land holdings along the river. Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership has a grant for designing a stream and floodplain restoration plan for the site, which is the top-rated project in the East Fork Lewis River Habitat Restoration Plan. The county hopes to engage the current owners for a donation or possible bargain sale of the property in conjunction with the Estuary Partnerships project. Next slide, please. The city of Camas has negotiated purchase of 115 acres that will connect the county's Green Mountain property to the Department of Natural Resources Lackamas Prairie Natural Area. Property includes the High Point on Green Mountain and helps to create a continuous open open space corridor from Lackamas Lake to Green Mountain. The property will include public access to Green Mountain and supports various trail uses and recreational opportunities. The property is being acquired predominantly with city funds and a significant donation of land value by the landowner. Next slide, please. In 2007, the Department of Natural Resources established the Lackamas Prairie Natural Area shown in the red border and has acquired 200 acres of land shown in green with a goal of restoring wet prairie habitat and expanding white oak woodlands. DNR is actively negotiating additional acquisitions in areas shown in yellow and has a grant pending for an additional 200 acres shown in the green diagonal striping. Up to 700 acres may be assembled in the natural area soon. An allocation of Conservation Futures Funds would be used by the county, cities, or a nonprofit organization for a future acquisition within the larger natural areas boundary that would help to complement these conservation efforts. Next slide, please. This project seeks a trail connection between Whipple Creek Regional Park and Fairgrounds Community Park to provide for a safe connection across Northwest 11th Avenue. The county currently owns an arrow strip of land approximately 100 feet wide north of the project site, but the location does not provide for a safe crossing of 11th Avenue. Site further south would provide that safer option. Whipple Creek Regional Park is a major equestrian center within the county and a connection to Fairgrounds Community Park and the Clark County Fairgrounds would provide a great benefit to trail users. While a fee acquisition of approximately 20 acres is proposed, an easement across the project site to a safer trail crossing area would also accomplish project objectives. A company proposing development of this property has offered to sell an easement to Clark County to make the trail connection. Next slide, please. The slide shows the extent of public lands on the south bank of the East Fork Lewis River between La Center and Paradise Point State Park. The project site is the only private inholding between La Center Road and the state park. Much of the county land in that stretch was aggregated with grant funds approved with anticipation that at some point, a greenway trail would be constructed through the area. The project will seek to acquire about 15 acres to block up the current public ownership along the shoreline and allow extension of the trail. This could be accomplished through an easement as well. Next, next slide, please. The 150-acre Flume Creek Natural Area was acquired by the county in 2015 using a grant from the Recreation and Conservation Office. Current public access is limited to pedestrian access from Sevier Road at the north end of the property and water access from Lake River. Providing greater public access to the natural area is a priority for Parks and Lands and the city of Ridgefield. The western portion of the property overlooks the Ridgefield National Wildlife Refuge. There is a system of old logging roads on the property that can be adapted to trail use. It is also identified as a trailhead in the Lewis and Clark Trail Plan. Next slide, please. This project seeks to make a 1.1-mile trail connection between the new Ridgefield Schools Sports Complex off Hillhurst Road and the Flume Creek Natural Area. A little more than half a mile of the corridor would be in the unincorporated area until connecting with the city of Ridgefield. The remaining half mile of the trail would traverse parcels set aside as open space through the city's development processes. Making this connection is a priority for the city of Ridgefield and we expect their active involvement within city limits. Next trail, or next slide, please. The existing Handwick Road to Molton Falls Trail is located on an easement through Department of Natural Resources property. This project was brought to our attention when many users of the trail heard of DNR plans to harvest timber on the site. Concerned about the potential effects of the timber sale on the trail view shed, many members advocated for the county to pursue a reconvenance of the trail corridor and its view shed to the county. The trail corridor is among the most popular in the regional system. Approximately 0.9 miles of the 2.5-mile trail segment is located on DNR property. DNR and the county have been actively working towards reconvenance of the property. The project was added to the acquisition plan as an alternative option should reconvenance not work out. Next slide, please. While preparing the master plan for development of property near the I-5 Northeast 179th Street interchange, Killian Pacific approached the county about potential interest in purchase of 31.5 acres. The land forms the headwaters of Whipple Creek and includes significant wetland and habitat areas. Killian Pacific proposes to develop a 0.7-mile natural surface public trail adjacent to the creek that would connect to internal trails within the development. Killian Pacific estimates the value of the constructed trail to be $20,000 and requests the county to use $600,000 in Conservation Futures funding to purchase the land. Next slide, please. 2019, the county provided $250,000 in Conservation Futures Bond revenues to the city of Vancouver to assist in the purchase of a 45-acre community park. Project sits near the eastern limits, eastern city limits along a tributary of Fifth Plain Creek and will serve recreational needs of residents both inside and outside city limits. Vancouver is requesting additional Conservation Futures funding for the project. Parks Advisory Board did not recommend funding this request because the county already contributed funds. The property has been acquired and they felt Conservation Futures funding should not be used this way. Next slide, please. The town of Yakult is seeking a 10 to 20-acre site to create a community park. Yakult feels this is an important economic development component that helps to integrate the larger vision for the community. Key locations along the Chilachi Railroad Corridor and the Clark County Scenic Highway Loop can also provide important trailhead opportunities. Yakult contacted the landowner of a parcel of interest at the south end of town. While supportive of the concept, the landowner's value expectations for the property exceeded the town's resources. Yakult now is looking at other potential park siting opportunities. Parks Advisory Board did not recommend funding this project and expressed concerns about Yakult not having a Parks Department or a willing landowner. Next slide, please. Moving forward, Parks and Lands will continue to work towards finalizing all remaining active Conservation Futures Bond project. Parks Advisory Board recommends funding the top-ranked projects and based on current estimates, it appears we can afford all of the projects discussed today over the six-year planning forecast. As grants and other revenues refill the Conservation Futures account or if projects are withdrawn, other project opportunities may be actively pursued. Parks plans to bring forward the six-year acquisition list for council approval on an annual basis. Making updates is necessary. Any projects actively pursued in the future will require council approval for, through the purchase and sale agreements. Lastly, we will continue with our public outreach for this plan and hope to move it forward to a public hearing for council to consider formal adoption in the coming months. Next slide, please. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your time today. Rocky and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Were you recognizing me, Madam Chair? I didn't.
I, I didn't, I hear you, except I heard a man's voice. Okay, Senator. As Senator, I'm sorry, Counselor.
The above. So Rocky and Kevin, thank, thank you for that. I have a lot of questions on a lot of these and, and I don't want to take up the time this morning. What I last heard was you're going to be bringing this to us in about a month or I didn't hear a specific date. What I would request is maybe someone can do a one-on-one with me so I can ask, ask my random questions. The question I have for today, really focusing on kind of your top priorities that you've listed. Some of these projects are very exciting to me and, and I think they'll have generations of benefit to the county and amplify some of the conservation work that's, that's already been done. So the first question is regarding our bond. I heard it'll be paid off in a couple of years and, and the payment's 1,045,000 left, or is that per year? And I guess the gist of my question is, do we benefit and can we pay it off early? That would be my first question.
Yes, so there's two bonds that we're currently paying on. One of those will be paid off within the next few years. That, that bond dates back to, I believe it was around 2011, 2012. The other bond that was issued in 2017-2018 timeframe was a 20-year period. So that one, we will continue to pay on until, what, if my math is right, around 2037. In terms of paying those off, the, what you saw in the slides, the 1 million, that's an annual payment for bond debt relief and our debt service. And so that, that number will go down when the first, when the older bond is paid off in the next few years. And then in terms of paying it off now versus later, I'd, I'd have to rely on our, our finance people to answer that question. If, you know, I don't know what the trade-offs are exactly, but, you know, thinking about it financially, as a homeowner, you pay off debt so that you have more, you know, more money on a monthly basis to, to do the things that you want to do. So I know Eva's our interim director and our finance manager at the same time and can probably help answer that question if.
Yeah, I can actually, I can help answer that question. Good morning, Council. For the record, this is Eva Haney. In addition to being department interim director, I'm also the department finance manager. So we have looked at that trade-off between paying now versus later. So just for the sake of clarity, the bond that is going away very shortly, that bond is more than half of our current debt service. And so we actually have a much better cash flow position just as soon as that's done. And now for the existing, for that longer-term period bond for Conservation Futures at this state of the program, it's not, we would be giving up a lot of our flexibility if we paid down the bond sooner rather than later. A lot of the projects that we have on this list, they may land higher, most likely, than what that initial request is. They could land lower. Preserving our current balance in some capacity allows us to approach the projects with the flexibility of knowing that we can commit to these and it frees us up in the short term to take advantage of other opportunities that may arise because affordable, open spaces within the Clark County region, they're evaporating. You know, within the next 30, 40 years, we may be at a point where it's very, very difficult to identify land for, for Conservation Futures acquisitions. So for us as a program, in the shorter term, it's much more advantageous for us to be able to have a more aggressive approach to acquisitions as compared to in the longer term.
Okay, thank you for that. And then if you'll bear with me, just a few other questions. So regarding that stretch along the Columbia, would, do conservation? Stretch along the Columbia, would, do conservation, uh. Monies allow for public access beyond trails like a marina or launch? Um, regarding cedars, uh, are we having discussions? Cause obviously. Uh, the operation and maintenance of all of these properties is an ongoing challenge and I understand it's limited to twenty-five percent of. Of this, uh, available fund balance. Are we having discussion with Battleground on them picking up? If we are able to accomplish cedars, will they pick up the O and M, uh, regarding that? And then the last area, and I've had some recent emails by people regarding heritage, uh, and our farms. Uh, I saw on your list, one of the ranches, Lewis Ranch that's being i- in progress, uh, but. Uh, regarding Heritage Farm, we're still waiting on a business plan. Hopefully we'll get that soon, but I'm wondering if. You know, whether it gets developed or conserved or just operates as is under a better business plan. Uh, are we looking at conservation futures specifically to help, uh, preserve, uh, our farm heritage throughout the county?
Those are great questions, Counselor Midbidge. So, um. Let's see, why don't we start with cedars? So with, with cedars and the maintenance costs, we know that, uh, we can use twenty-five percent of the prior year levy to, um, to tackle maintenance and, um. We, we also know that we haven't been spending that much on an annual basis for maintenance of our conservation futures properties. So. So Rocky and I, and mostly Rocky's been looking at, um. Uh, establishing a natural areas team that would be, um. Better suited to perform the maintenance along trails and, um, and in our natural areas, which are. You know, tend to be left in more like a natural state. So they require less maintenance than your typical park project. And then as parks develop over time, you start to look at that transition between. When is it managed by the legacy lands program and when is it then become a park and is managed by parks? So those are things that we're definitely looking at. Rocky, is there anything you wanted to add on the natural areas side of things?
Um, two, two quick things again, Rocky, for the record, um. So the first is in regards to the, the concepts that have come out of, uh, the cedars element. There, there's been some. Some ideas that have been floated out there and I think we're doing our due diligence and working with what we're allowed to do, given the bond restrictions as well as, as other programmatic. Ex- uh, elements, uh, you know, and that's things that we'll, we'll flush out and, and bring forward. Once we, we kind of have, uh, all of our ducks in a row. Um, in regards to the natural areas, I think as we do have. A, a great team that are doing a lot of work and we're just trying to figure out how to pilot something to determine. As our population changes and our, our use of our lands changes, making sure that we've integrated. Our legacy lands portfolio into our parks system and, and actively, actively managing them in that way. And that's gonna, uh, hopefully some will pilot this year. And that'll give us data to come back a- and look at, at those future operations. Um, it's always a balance right of managing versus acquiring. Uh, and that's something we're, we're very sensitive to. So I think all those things I, I hope will come back and, and have more information to help with, you know, definitely a lot of the. Ideas that came out of, uh, the neighbors group for the cedars as well as, um, work with the, the city battleground are, are interesting. It's just a matter of. Some of the limitations we have, uh, to move forward on some of those things. And some of those seem to be in the future concepts. And so again. Right now, we're just trying to, um, get the appraisal work done and, and all the other legwork so that then we can talk about the future.
So the, the first question you asked was about the Columbia River. And whether that property could be used for other forms of. Um, recreational access, like I'm, I'm assuming like a, a boat launch, something of that nature. And, um. We would have to look at the R C Ws and, and confirm exactly, but there, there are. The ability to, to construct recreational improvements on these properties as you, you see in many of those. Examples from some of the first slides I showed you that, uh, you know, Salmon Creek Greenway, uh, some of these larger regional parks that have recreational improvements constructed on them. Uh, it, then it becomes a question of what's, how, what's appropriate in that location. Um, and then there's also grant opportunities through the state for water access, um, that we could look at. Um, as an option for that property.
Mind if I just jump in here real quick, Kevin?
Yeah.
Um, this is Bill Richardson, Council. Um, so with regards to that specific property, um. The one additional hurdle that we would need to overcome with that specific property that we wouldn't have to overcome in other. Boat ramp installations on recreational property is that this is in the Columbia River Gorge. So there would be the additional permitting requirement buying through them. Isn't that? Is that in the gorge? That, Kevin, is that in the gorge area or is that outside of the gorge area?
I think it's far enough west that it's outside of the.
Oh, okay. So yeah, then it would just be handled like any other property and it does fall under the. The, the usual requirements of the R C O grants, which is they do, uh, actually allow for recreational activity. So. A marina may not be available, a boat ramp. Quite frankly, we've done them before, fishing docks, boat ramps, stuff like that. Um, those are easy to, to, to justify. Once you get into a business-like operation, it gets a little bit tougher to justify it. So there would be some limitations and we'd. Quite frankly, anything that we propose, we would run it through R C O first to make sure that we weren't overstepping, um, the, the grant funding. Because that's the last thing you want to do is get an exception to your, your grant.
And then lastly, I think you asked about farm preservation, y- you know, and I think, um, when Pat was here prior to his retirement and through this, this process, we've identified. Some ideas of trying to do, um. And, uh, buying the, the development rights over some ranches or farms and finding those, uh, opportunities, I think up in the, the Ridgefield area was where some of those farms were identified. And so we've been working with, um, uh, Kevin, I'll have to help me out with the name, but there's, uh, that, uh.
The Washington Farmland Trust.
Thank you, sir. Um, to identify and, and, and work with those potentials. I know I've had a conversation with a small fifteen acre. Um, farm outside of La Center where, uh, someone's interested in that same thing is preserving, um, that legacy moving forward. And so hopefully. We'll continue to get some traction on that and, and preserve that, that footprint and that activity for future generations.
Well, I look forward to, uh, your proposal to us and some further detailed discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions or clarification of the council to staff?
I don't, I, I guess my question would be just a slight up, more of an update on the hand. Is it Handwick? They, the, the trail that we're working with D N R with. You, I haven't heard it, but I don't know quite exactly where we are and what, what needs to be done.
Sure, I, I can provide an update. So the Department of Natural Resources has been leading the effort. And what they have done is worked through some of the due diligence requirements on their end, uh, survey of the property. Appraisal of the property and appraisal of properties that they would use to. What they have to do is a, what's called an inter-fund transfer. So the property that we would like conveyed to us is in the common school trust. And it needs to be transferred to the other trust with, and, and then, uh, uh, trade made. So, so they've been working on some of that. They issued C P A. And, um, the latest that I heard from, from the Department of Natural Resources was, uh, before the holidays. I think it was November. That. We needed to enter into, uh. Uh, an updated agreement that what we had done with our letter of interest at the beginning of this process was not. Um. Was not sufficient according to the statutes required for the transfer process. So, so I'm waiting for that to come from the state. And then they need to do a public hearing. And with all of the struggles that we've had recently, uh, public hearings have been hard to, to hit, to pull off. But, um, that's one of the next things that needs to happen. And then. Um, council will have to take some action and the Board of Natural Resources will have to take some action. So those are kind of the remaining elements.
So their public hearing is not like our public hearing. Like we've been having for the last two years, they, they're not allowed to have a virtual hearing?
I, I, I.
You do probably.
No, no, I, no, I misspoke. It's more of a, a public open house. Um, so they are trying to solicit input from the public and they typically do these things in a. Um, you know, in the, the local area in, and like at a school and have people come and give their input. Um, so, so. The project manager at the state has been. Trying to figure out how to make that happen.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the council?
Chair, I don't have a question, but I, uh, I do have a comment. Um, first of all, uh, Rocky, Kevin, um, all the department, thank you for this, uh, presentation and the plan, reading through the, the draft plan. I really appreciate the, uh. I know a lot of it is required, but the extensive nature of the plan and the detail that's in it about all of this work. Uh, I think that the point Eva made earlier about, um. The increasing scarcity of affordable open space is incredibly, uh, poignant. And it's great to see this level of work being done to try to continue to preserve these spaces. Um, I do want to express my, um, support and encouragement for as much as you can do to pers. Excuse me, to pursue the farm preservation programs. Um, if the Washington Farmland Trust is interested in partnering, then let's pursue that, whatever we can, hearing from a lot of the farmers in the community, especially the. Um, the, the ones who are working on smaller farms and who are aging and trying to, uh, preserve their land, but. Trying to figure out how to do so as they try to get out of this business. Um, I know that a lot of younger farmers are having trouble actually acquiring land. So whatever we can do to help, uh, preserve. Uh, the active farms in Clark County would be fantastic. And it looks like there are a lot of great avenues to do that. So. Uh, look forward to hearing more about those efforts from you. And, um, yeah, thanks again.
I'm sure. So also. Yeah, um, I also don't really have any questions. I just want to, again, um. Piggyback on Counselor Lance and just say, um, thank you for the work on this. We, and I really like the idea of getting these more consistent updates. Um. So thank you for that. I also just, also want to give kind of a, a shout out to the Parks Advisory Board for their hard work and, uh, bringing. And this, working with you to bring this to us. So thank you for that. And really, really some exciting projects to look forward to. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, staff. We, we appreciate your work on this and, and this report. And, uh, we look forward to hearing more about several projects that are kind of waiting in the wings. So. Thank you. And, um, I guess i- if there's nothing else, then this concludes your work session on this.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so we will adjourn this, um. Work session. We're gonna take a five minute break and be back and, uh, have council time then. So we'll be back at. About, um, nine fifty. Okay? Thank you.